Is going to reiterate what we just talked about.
Okay, I'm going to hit live. Think you can. We don't have any attendees yet, but we are recording.
All right. So this is Chair Mark Frost. I will call to order the matter of Planning Department File Number 2020-25 Amendments to the Hood River Transportation System Plan. I'd like to convene the public hearing. So let me start with a brief description of the legislative process and a few disclosures disclosures required by state law. We will begin with the staff report in which the staff will describe the proposed amendments, the applicable approval criteria, and how the proposal is consistent with those criteria. Second, we will take public testimony. When the public testimony is complete and before we close the record, we will check to see if staff has any parting comments following the conclusion of all public testimony. After that, we will close the record, deliberate, and render a recommendation to city council. Our recommendation, however, is not final until it is reduced in writing and officially issued. The city council will make the decision final. And when the written decision is issued, it may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals or Luba. However, to appeal one of our decisions, you must participate either orally or in writing before the close of the record. Given the amount of material to be covered, it is anticipated that the matter will be continued to a date certain prior to completing testimony and closing the record. Here's some basic rules for presenting testimony in tonight's hearing. Number one, please begin with your name and mailing address. And two, please limit your testimony to issues that are relevant to the proposal and the approval criteria. If you believe that other or different approval criteria apply, please identify those and explain why you think they apply. So that is by way of procedural introduction for tonight's meeting. If anyone has any questions about the process as we go forward, please feel free to ask them during the public testimony portion of the hearing. And for audience members watching the teleconference, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom if you wish to speak. And for audience members dialing in by phone, please use the following commands via your phone's dial pad. So star nine is to raise your hand if you wish to speak. And star six is to toggle the mute and unmute. Okay, so before we get started, does any commissioner wish to make any disclosure or abstain from participating or voting in the matter being heard because of potential possible financial gain resulting from the legislative action? So can we go through? I'm going to call out names if we can just kind of run through. Get a yay or an A. So Amy. You're on mute. Oh.
That would help.
There we go.
No conflict of interest.
Commissioner Tina Lassen.
No bias, no conflict.
All right, Commissioner Bill Irving.
No bias, no conflict.
Commissioner Erica Price. Are you on mute? Here we go.
No bias or conflict.
All right, Commissioner Megan Ramley. Amy?
None.
And I think Commissioner Vice Chair Commissioner Sue Powers.
No bias, no conflict.
And I have none. All right, so we are going to start with a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Frost. Just a moment, and I'm going to launch a PowerPoint presentation.
We can see Transportation System Plan Amendments. Okay, full screen. There we go.
Again, thank you, Chair Frost and Commissioners. I'd like to introduce to you tonight John Baskett of DKS and Associates. John helped us the city with the 2011 TSP update, and he's helping us with the current TSP amendments as well. You have a copy of the staff report, and it's available to the public for download through the city's website, including a description of the applicable criteria. Tonight is our first hearing on the matter, and I expect to be in a work session with the city council next Monday. And then back to the Planning Commission for a second hearing on March 15. Then expect the first city council hearing to occur on April 12. Just as background, I'll be discussing funding of projects for the city council on March 8. So tonight I'll start with some background information before highlighting the proposed TSP amendments. We can then take some time to respond to your questions before taking public testimony. These amendments were initiated by the city council. It's addressed in the council's 2020 work plan. Did have some scheduling setbacks during the pandemic. This is not a complete TSP update. Relatively narrow in scope, limited mostly to transportation system plan improvements on the west side of the city. But some updates such as revised cross-sections for local streets can be applied more broadly. The Westside Area Concept Plan Project was initiated in the summer of 2016. The concept plan focused on land use and transportation on the west side of the city, where most of Hood River's developable land is located. It was prepared with the assistance of two advisory committees, and it generated, as you recall, a lot of public discussion. Concept Plan Report was published on December 29, 2017. Beginning in March of 2018, public hearings were held over the course of about 18 months to refine recommendations in the concept plan. Many of the proposed TSP amendments are based on recommendations from the streets and transit framework of the concept plan, including relocation of a future minor arterial street known at that time as Alignment D, establishing a new street classification for neighborhood connector streets, and updating street designs. TSP amendments also are based on the pedestrian and bike framework of the concept plan, which recommends, among other improvements, an off-street trail along Henderson Creek and a ridgeline trail north of Sherman Avenue. During public hearings on the concept plan in the spring and summer of 2019, the Planning Commission sought feedback from the public regarding these frameworks prior to deliberation. Five of our current commissioners were on the Planning Commission at that time. The commission anticipated further refinements to pedestrian, bicycle, and path projects by staff, and the commission's recommendations were forwarded to the city council after a hearing on August 19 of 2019. Following a city council work session on September 9, 2019, the council directed staff to prepare updates to the TSP based on the planning commission's recommendations. Key recommendations for the frameworks are noted on this slide. There were a number of challenges identified as we worked with DKS to prepare the TSP amendments. And I'm going to run through those in the following slides. We relined the Mount Adams Extension to Alignment D and named it, as was requested, Westside Drive. We added new design for minor arterial streets with physically separated bike lane. We added Neighborhood Connector Street Classification, updated designs for local street options, refined intersection designs at Mount Adams and Cascade and Mount Adams and Wine Country. We added traffic calming on 30th Street between May Street and Sherman Avenue. And we updated the list of motor vehicle projects and cost estimates in the TSP. The primary amendment is the relocation of a future north-south minor arterial street, now known as Westside Drive between Wine Country and May Street, as seen in these slides on the left side of the screen. You see the up in TSP in that alignment. Right side of the screen. We've shifted the road to this alignment.
Hey Kevin, you're drifting off a little. I wonder if you could.
On the audio?
Yeah, on the audio. Thank you.
About that, thank you. As the city grows, the street is expected to become a critical improvement that removes traffic from other corridors, including Cascade Avenue, Rand Road, and 13th Street. Three alternatives were evaluated, and the rationale for this alignment is that it can be designed to be less steep than the other alternatives. It avoids placement of a minor arterial at the front of a future school, and it has less disruption of neighborhood connectivity than the other options that were evaluated. The commission recommended changing the minor arterial design for Alignment D to feature physically separated bike lanes rather than buffered on-street bike lanes. Due to topographical challenges and concerns about costs, hybrid design was prepared with physically separated bike lane on only one side of the street and a buffered bike lane on the opposite side. We anticipate using this design on new minor arterial streets, those that have not yet been constructed. And we've also retained a design with the on-street buffered bike lanes on both sides, which is expected to be helpful for retrofitting existing arterials at some locations. The TSP now incorporates neighborhood connector streets to improve connectivity. Those are the dashed green lines on this map, and these are conceptual alignments. They function like local streets with wider planter strips to accommodate stormwater. They have not been added to the project lists in the TSP, but they'll be implemented when development is proposed. Planning Commission recommended using advisory shoulders on these streets, which feature only a single-traveling and wider bike lanes. State law prohibits vehicles from driving in bike lanes, so advisory shoulders are not recommended at this time. I should note that I also just found a mistake in this cross-section. It notes 33 feet of pavement. That should be 34 feet of pavement, so we'll work with a consulting team to correct that. Local street options now feature planter strips between curbs and sidewalks to improve conditions for pedestrians. The Planning Commission recommended six-foot minimum width sidewalks, retaining the planter strip width and reducing pavement width to 26 feet. Reducing pavement width would not be sufficient to accommodate on-street parking, so that is not recommended. The intersections of Mount Adams Avenue at Cascade and Mount Adams at Wine Country now include roundabouts as preferred alternatives in the TSP. And traffic calming measures have been added to the TSP on 30th Street between May Street and Sherman Avenue. We updated the pedestrian system map and the list of projects and cost estimates. Yes?
Could I interrupt quick? That those circles that were orange or red were those roundabouts previous slide?
These, on the left side of the screen, the circle is just indicating the area that I was referring to.
Got it. Okay. Section of top and bottom of Mount Adams Roundabout.
Yep, and then on the right image is 30th Street between May and Sherman, where traffic calming measures have been added.
Thank you.
Again, we updated the pedestrian system map and the list of projects and cost estimates in the TSP. We did the same for the bicycle system map, including the projects and cost estimates. And we use plain language to designate bike routes that were formerly known as bicycle boulevards. North of May Street, this slide shows the conceptual alignments of pedestrian improvements. These alignments were refined based on topography and to reduce redundancy. Note, P19 is the Henderson Creek Trail. That got a lot of discussion. And P20 is the Ridgeline Trail. So a lot of discussion on that issue. South of May Street, P11 was added as a 10-foot-wide east-west path between Frankton Road and Belmont aligned with Post Canyon Drive. The segment between Frankton and 30th could be constructed as an interim improvement or complement construction of Post Canyon Street extension in the future. The local street connectivity map was updated to reflect both Westside Drive and the neighborhood connector streets. Connectivity is a key element to making the system more transit-friendly. No other transit component amendments are recommended in the TSP document at this time. Columbia Transit will be working on a transit master plan update this year, and Planning Department staff will participate. Cat is also working with the city to identify fixed route transit stop locations where permanent shelters and other improvements can be provided. Community members have expressed a lot of interest in seeing projects get funded and constructed. And the first step, of course, is to get projects into the plan. Right now, there is a huge gap between the estimated cost of these projects and the revenue sources that are currently available to pay for them. Last month, between February 10th and 28th, we held a virtual open house at hoodriverts.com that included a bilingual survey intended to get a sense of community priorities for funding projects. I will discuss project funding again with the city council next Monday night, March 8, in a work session, and expect to provide an update on project funding to the commission that you're hearing on the 15th. So with that, I'm wondering if we have any other questions that we can go through before requesting public testimony? And I'll wait for Chair Frost to direct traffic here.
All right. Commissioner Powers?
Yep. Can you go back to the drawing of the Ridgeline Trail and clarify exactly where it comes out on Frankton? Because I remember we had a lot of discussion about that when I saw the map. It looked different than I recall.
Yeah, so again, responding to topography and some of the other elements, including and anticipated, I'm going to go back another couple of slides here. Chair Powers, Commissioner Powers, excuse me. You see a neighborhood connector street on the left side of your screen. This is just to the south.
Oh, yeah.
Covenant Christian Church.
Oh, okay, okay.
Idea is for the Ridgeline Trail to tie into Frankton Street right about that where that new neighborhood connector is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
Yes, Kevin, could you go back to the cross-section that shows the the barrier between more?
Sure.
Yes, so just with the planting strips, I know that's, you know, that's one section. But at spots where there are potentially bus stops, is there the ability to make sure that there's an ADA ramp or ADA accessible spot if the bus is dropping off there? Or if that's where the bus stop is? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, don't have this in this image, but there are footnotes in the cross-sections that explain that the city engineer has the authority to make modifications as things come up, like details such as bus stop locations. Another thing we don't see in this image is how the bike path transitions back to the street at intersections of driveways and other street intersections, which is a, it's a challenging aspect of the off-street trail is getting that engineering correct so that the cyclists remain visible to traffic that might be turning, you know, off of the street or onto it. So that's another, another issue that we spent quite a bit of time looking at with the city engineering department at DKS.
Okay, wonderful. And then also kind of along those same lines as well on the side where there was, where there's just that buffer and the bike lane. Did you guys look at the potential bus-bike conflict that might occur if the bus is pulling over to a bus stop and there is a bike in the bike lane?
I don't think that we spent as much time as we will need to on those types of conflicts and what the design, how it would be modified, but I think we've discussed in the past possibility that some of the striping is modified. Maybe, for example, with dash lines that, maybe some color, some things that help cyclists and buses navigate that space more safely. But we, we've got some more work to do, obviously, with Columbia Area Transit on stop locations. And that may be another opportunity where we can look more closely at not only those locations, but how to integrate these types of improvements with the bus stops.
Okay, great. Thank you. I had a couple more questions, if I may. Just on the major arterial roads, and I'm sure you did, just wanted to confirm. Where there are bigger trucks that are traveling on those roads, did make sure that they, the roads are big enough where they can turn safely and not go into the oncoming traffic lane? Is that part of this, or is that outside of the scope?
John, I don't know if this is something that you are able to speak to at the moment. One thing that we do in the cross-section, Commissioner Slappy, is narrower travel lanes in order to help slow down vehicles. But this section doesn't show the center turn lane. So there's an additional section, and I can try to pull it up or at least present it to you at the next meeting that shows the three-lane section, and it has a wider center turn lane. I think I guess my hope is that it's sufficient to accommodate truck turning movements at intersections, again, where the road flares back out to accommodate that center turn lane.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have another question?
I think that's all of my questions.
Amy, okay. All right, I see Commissioner Lassen. Sorry.
Yeah, I had a question on the, on the road that we said we had physically separated bike lanes on one side, but because of the road width, we're talking about doing just buffered on the other. And I'm wondering if we considered just doing on the side where it's physically separated, maybe just making that wider and making that a two-way bike lane? So the cyclists are protected going both directions. Is that something that was considered? Or any reason why it wasn't considered?
Commissioner Lassen, I don't believe that we spent time looking at increasing that width. I think that the way that the design is shown right now, that it is adjacent to sidewalk. And as we talked about earlier, there's a bit of refinement that's probably still necessary to look at how these two modes are separated.
The bikes to the pedestrians, me?
Yeah, are they on this, at the same elevation? Is there something that separates them? But I think as we worked on this, I was probably looking at this as basically a 13-foot-wide improvement that felt like it would be sufficient for two-way bike traffic. But that is only if everything is at the same surface elevation, and there's no separation between bike and ped. So that's something I can touch base with the consulting team on and take a little closer look at that.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm questioning is if we have six feet on one side that's not protected. You know, can we just move that six feet over? So like, say, we have 13 feet of protected bikes. Is that enough for two-way? Megan is better versed on the width for these kinds of things than I am. But that was one question. My other question is on one of the slides, it mentioned that the TSP is updating motor vehicle projects and costs. And I'm wondering where ped and bike fits into that? Are we to assume that those are also the cost implications of, say, the Henderson Creek Trail, Ridgeline Trail? Are those also being?
They are. Yes.
We're in the issue.
Established new cost estimates for these new facilities like Henderson Creek Trail and the Ridgeline Trail, and updated the cost estimates from the 2011 TSP for both pedestrian and bicycle improvements.
Oh, I see. Okay, great, great. And then just my last question is, we talked about the traffic calming on 30th. Have we dug down deep to talk about what that is going to look like, if it's speed bumps or whatever? Or is that, does that come down the road?
You know, I don't have a slide for you prepared right now, but we did, there are a number of options. There is a long list of options that was evaluated in the context of the Westside Concept Plan.
Yeah, it's all coming back to me.
But I think the main thing we did was get or recommend adding funding for traffic calming measures on the street. And, you know, I think it'll be interesting when you go through some of the public feedback that we received in the survey, with some folks expressing concerns about some of the methods. For example, maybe chicanes where the curb might move out into the street in order to slow things down, how that can create challenges for cyclists. So I think there's still a bit of refinement necessary, and we've got some really valuable comments. And we'll don't have a specific set of traffic calming measures to present to you tonight for that section of the street.
Okay, TBD. Okay, great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, next up, Megan?
Yeah, thank you. I wrote down a number of questions ahead of the meeting. Well, first two are generic, more general in terms of process. Kevin, you referred to the survey. Are we going to get to hear those results at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm going to forward that to you tomorrow. I just reserved, or excuse me, received a summary of those comments this afternoon. So forward that to you, if not tonight, tomorrow. And it'll take a bit of time to get through it, you know, the, the questions. And of course, we had concerns expressed about the questions and it's the individual comments, the recommendations that people gave us for specific projects that they wanted to see get done that are pretty interesting, and it will take some time to read through those.
Okay, great. I'm looking forward to reading those. And yeah, I took the survey and I found it like equivalent to choosing my favorite child. Intersections versus, versus bike versus ped versus trail. I'm like, I want them all. And in fact.
You say that because what I saw in that summary was that people felt the same way. There wasn't one mode that kind of jumped out as most important. People, there are a lot of different interests in the community. And really, in my mind, it was the individual comments that became a little more valuable.
Great, yeah. It's funny because intersections are something I thought was the most important for all, everybody. That's where the.
Yes, one thing to keep, one thing to keep in mind is this was not a scientific survey, right? We have a limited number of people who actually participated. So I don't know that I can say that it is representative of every, every interest, but I think gives us a pretty good indication of, of people, the variety of interests that people have.
Right, great. And then you already know I've asked about this. And I'm sorry I never followed up on our email, but in terms of the, this, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a closely tied TSP update with ODA. And specifically Exit 62.
Yeah, so, and I was going to mention that here next before we got into testimony. Thanks for bringing it up. There are, again, there were a number of comments that we got that were cut beyond the scope of this set of TSP amendments, including interest in the Heights Cascade. There are two other projects that are, one that is occurring right now, getting started as a Heights Urban Renewal Project. So there's an opportunity for people to kind of get plugged into Heights-specific transportation issues. And upcoming, Planning Director Nelson will be initiating another project that is focused on the historic Columbia River Highway. So from the west end of West Cliff Avenue or Drive to through the area that we're talking about now into the downtown and of course through town. And I think the focus really will be a lot of what you're interested in seeing, the section of Cascade Avenue and how we are addressing the needs of pedestrians, cyclists, and of course, motor vehicles. So it's a streetscape project and another opportunity that people will have an well, their opportunity to comment. And potentially one or both of those projects, Heights Urban Renewal and the Cascade Streetscape Project will lead to another set of TSP amendments.
Okay, that was three more questions. Okay, that was three more questions you just knocked off. Thank you. And I want to also plug the Safe Roots to School survey that just went out last week as another transportation-related. So on on metrics, I was reading the performance metrics for intersection. Have we ever included crash data as a metric? Or is that something that we consider, can consider for future TSP updates?
For what purpose? To determine what type of intersection improvement is appropriate?
Correct. And whether an intersection is failing or not, if there's been fatal or near fatal crashes from driving, walking, biking, riding the bus. Can we look at specific improvements to counter those?
John, I don't know if this is another one that you might be able to speak on. Certainly, we do look at crash data when working with ODOT, for example, to implement new traffic control along a state highway. I believe that that in some cases that might help to justify or not necessarily meet warrants, but at least call attention to the problem. John, please do jump in, correct me if I'm wrong there.
Yeah, no, it's an interesting idea. And I guess it depends on what the intended purpose of that is. It's comparing it to, you know, right now, the city probably only has a, like an adopted standard of, you know, a performance related to, you know, auto mobility, right? The level of service standard. And usually where that comes into play is when you're dealing with development, you know, right, Kevin? This is to do the traffic impact assessment. You know, they're determining how much traffic they're going to generate. You're you're monitoring, you know, levels of congestion. That tells you if something needs to be improved. You, I guess you could do that using other metrics, whether it's a multimodal metric or a safety metric. I guess, yeah, it kind of comes back to, you know, what your intent is. Kind of is is part of what I heard you describe was just a consideration for when an intersection should be improved. You could do that without making it necessarily a standard. And usually, when any intersection improvements are done, crash data and safety performance, any risk factors, even if you don't have, you know, crash data that's that's been documented, should definitely be considered. And I don't know if you had something more specific in mind, like adopting a standard for a certain purpose?
Yes, just having the, it was a great table that was included in in our documentation and it had a level of service. And then I forget what the short for the queuing time is. But it would be great right next to that to have crash data. And I say this because, like, loss of human life or injury, something costs Americans $400 per person per year for just pedestrian crashes. And so I think there's more to throughput through an intersection is public safety. And not something for this TSP update, but I would love to see for future updates. Sorry, couple, few more questions. I was a little taken aback on the the Neighborway Bike Boulevard. The, it was so exciting for me to see Neighborway included as a term that will be used in the future. And I remember looking at the map, the update map for bike routes and pedestrian routes and didn't see Neighborway in in the map. But then I read the text and it said that Bike Boulevard was renamed as Bike Routes. And I don't remember having that conversation. I thought it was just a find and replace of Bike Boulevard to Neighborway.
The time that the Planning Commission was making its recommendations, that was the recommendation. Yeah, just find and replace. What we found as we dug a little bit deeper is that we had some conflicts where Bike Boulevards were designated on collector streets and
I read that.
So that was one issue. And then separately, you know, as we came to understand the purpose of neighborways as really not intended to allow through vehicular traffic. It didn't seem appropriate to embed that in the maps of the TSP and say, we're not going to put, we're not going to put vehicles on these streets. So again, remains or is entered into the TSP as something that can be considered. And maybe there will be some streets where you find over time that it is appropriate, maybe based on the circumstances of a particular street.
Okay. And my last questions are regarding funding because you said that the City Council's meeting on March 8th to talk about funding. Yeah.
You've got a variety on their calendar. Other topics that we we check in with them about.
And sidewalks are not funded publicly. They're funded privately, correct?
It depends on how they are addressed specifically in the Transportation System Plan. Most of the time, they are installed when the adjacent property owner develops or redevelops property. Let's say that's 99% of when we see sidewalks constructed. It may be that there is a a section of sidewalk that the city believes is a priority and that they want to place it on the list of funded projects. Collect STC funds, for example, and build it, even if the adjacent property owner is not ready to to improve their frontage. So it's possible. You don't see too many examples of it, but it is possible. And currently in the 2011 TSP, for example, it has some sidewalk improvements, including one along Serpentine Avenue that was used as part of the system development charge methodology. But ultimately, the City Council decided they weren't interested in funding that project. They didn't see that it was as important as for maybe a sidewalk in another location. Or in our case, right now, the big focus is on the intersection of Cascade and Rand and signalizing that and making that safer for not only vehicles but pedestrians and cyclists as well.
Right, I had read that about Serpentine and was admittedly disappointed, but the, I was wondering if Planning Commission has ever made the recommendation to City Council to start to change to fund the sidewalks publicly, because that seems like a thorn sometimes in homeowners. And I don't know, we end up with disconnected sidewalks a little bit because of that, because there's no priority roots for the city to focus on. And then I'll just ask my second quick question about funding and that'll be it. And then has there ever been a proposal to do, because the the crux of all of this seems to be the funding and you talked about the interest level in getting these projects done. And infrastructure seems to be a big talking point within the city right now. Has, have we ever talked about doing or proposed a ballot measure? I don't know what mechanism would be to fund active transportation, walking, biking, or trails in that ballot measure?
I've been employed by the city for about 13 years in that time. No. No, you're with that effort. But that is one potential source of funding. If the City Council thought that it was appropriate to go to the voters, that might it might be something where, you know, a champion in the community brings it to their attention and suggests that's an appropriate path and and willing to to help talk it up.
Okay, thank you so much, Kevin. I know this is a lot of work. I appreciate it.
At all. Thanks. Thanks, Megan. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Megan. Anyone else clarifying questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Two questions. The local street option. I didn't see, and I'm guessing that these options are going to be added to existing options. We still have the curb-tight sidewalk option.
The idea was to eliminate the curb-tight sidewalk option and replace with a plan or strip between curb and sidewalk in all three options.
Okay. So if we're in a neighborhood where there is an existing curb-tight sidewalk, what is the expectation for frontage improvements?
The expectation probably is to implement what's what would be in the TSP with a transition between the existing segment and the new segment from the curb tight to the plan or strip in between. But if if that is not feasible, again, there's a footnote on the cross-section page that explains the city engineer does have the ability to to approve a modification to the design. It may be helpful if if we had some direction from the commission on what you would like to see in those types of circumstances. And I could certainly run that through the engineering department.
Okay, good. The other comment, you talked a little bit about signalization of Rand and Cascade and funding. Do you have any status on that particular project?
Yeah, the Rand and Cascade project is, it's moving forward. It's extremely expensive. I think that the cost estimate right now is $3.2 million. A lot of that has to do with the realignment of that intersection on the North and South Lakes. The city does have a plan to fund that project. And I touched base with the Finance Director Will Norris last week about it. That plan does rely heavily on transportation STCs. There is also a proportionate shared district in place to generate a little additional funding source for that project.
Okay, sounds great. That's my questions.
Okay, any other questions? Erica? Didn't go yet. Anyone else that I missed?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks, Erica. I think for me, Kevin, I think the only question I have is just this discussion around from wine country and wine country and Mount Adams up to 30th, what that grade will look like. It seems like there's looking at this, is there not going to be another road kind of through the middle of those two green areas? Or is it MV5 is now the current path to get up that hill?
Yeah, the MV5 alignment is the existing road cut that you find out there today. There was some excavation done around 2005. And the Transportation System Plan currently anticipates, you know, the minor arterial in that alignment. During the concept planning process, it was suggested to, again, move minor arterial west but retain a neighborhood connector street through that road cut to serve the Fox Hollow and mainly subdivision neighborhoods. Again, providing the the intent behind the neighborhood connector streets to improve connectivity locally.
Okay. All right, any other questions for folks? And thanks for being patient. If you are part of the audience and you want to raise your hand and ask questions, now's the time to do so. So there's a button at the bottom says raise hand. Go ahead and click on that. Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Chip. I just wanted to mention that I did receive written testimony from a couple of community members, Tina Castanera and Mary King, that I will forward to you. Again, I'll get you the comments from the virtual open house. As we discussed with Commissioner Ramey, there will be a couple of other opportunities for folks who are interested in in transportation system issues that are beyond the scope of this project, including the Heights Urban Renewal Discussion and the upcoming Cascade Streetscape Project. Excuse me.
Okay. All right, going back to testimony. I don't see any hands up yet. Anybody wishing to make a comment, provide some testimony into the record? So this won't be your last chance. We will have another meeting in two weeks to continue this and you'll have another chance to provide your testimony as well. Well, if that's it, Kevin, I think we can wrap for today, right?
Yeah, if assuming we've got a quorum available on March 15th, 5:30 PM, we've looked for a motion to continue file 2025-25. I'm sorry, got the slide wrong. The file number is 2020-25 to March 15th, 5:30 PM.
I know I'll be here that day. Anybody, is there any issues with attending on that date? All right, I'm not going anywhere. All right. I'll entertain the motion. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, make a motion to continue file number 2020-25 to March 15th, 2021, not earlier than 5:30 PM.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Tina, it's all two. I saw Amy. That's Megan, Erica.
Hi.
Bill votes aye, Chair votes aye, motion passes. Okay. Any further discussion from today, Kevin?
I've got a I'm sorry, was it Jennifer?
Yeah, there's a set of minutes on the agenda to take a look at.
Oh, all right, let's take it back. All right, you want to approve the draft minutes from February 16th? I actually don't know if I got those. Did I get those?
That's what I'm wondering, too. I don't remember seeing those.
Yeah, I actually don't remember getting those.
I'm scrolling right now.
It was Jennifer's first email after Kevin or before Kevin sent us the links.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that I failed to get that to you. I got a little bit distracted by the the TSP amendment project.
Okay, I make a recommendation. We hold that off till next time.
Great.
Let's cover that in two weeks.
Okay, very good.
Okay, it's a wrap. Thanks for everyone's time.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. All right.
See you, everybody. Good night.